It's 7:00. I'm coming to order the regular Planning Commission meeting of August 1st for the Village Council of Michigan. Please rise for the press.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion, please. Delkey here, Anderson here, Shaw.
Here.
Brand.
Here.
Rumble here. Patterson is absent. Okay, next item is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Support.
Okay. Next thing up is...
Vote.
Vote, oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Approval of meeting minutes for July 6th. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for July 6th, 2022.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, abstain.
Is there any public comment? No? We'll move on to number seven, which is the public hearing. I need a motion to open the public hearing for 23010 Main Street.
I'll make a motion.
Make the motion to open the public hearing at 7:02.
Did we get support?
Support.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now open. We are here to hear considerations on the amending the previously granted special approval land use, the conditions of the previously granted special approval land use for We the People Restaurant at 23010 East Main or Main of Michigan. We're now open for a public comment. No public present, so I think it's safe to close the public hearing. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to...
Wait, I should ask Ross, too.
As I say, there's...
Yeah, sorry. Before we do that, I'd like to ask the applicant if he has anything to say to council.
Just that I had previously appeared before the Planning Commission passed out some background information. I am trying to modify the special approval land use, which was granted in February 2015, which has a line in there that indicates that my ADA, that the handicap accessible ramp, ADA ramp that I previously had there had to be removable and made of wood. I would say the issue is really the removability is my decision to go with wood, so it didn't necessarily have to be in there. Wood was simply the easiest thing to remove, had to be removed. I could have made it out of concrete, but that would have been expensive.
I'd like to correct you. The condition was wood, so it couldn't be anything else.
I got it, I got it. I'm just advising the Planning Commission, that is what I told Commissioner Delucky, that I was going to make it out of. So it got into the SALU, which is okay. I'm asking this sentence that says removable and wood to be taken out of the approval. That's really all I want. I did mention to the Planning Commission previously, at the previous meeting, that we do have an agreement for access signed by the village council president back in 2013 that allowed a ramp and put no restrictions on it, other than the agreement in its entirety would be null and void if each of three different things that I was allowed to do were taken out, one of which was a ramp. So all of those, once all of them were removed, then the general access, agreement for access document would then be null and void. That document did get signed and is on file with the county. But as Becky says, there is a subsequent special approval land use that does have, that it needs to be removable and made out of wood. I would like to make it out of concrete. I need to replace it. It was torn down as part of the tornado recovery that we've undertaken. I need to replace it. I think it's appropriate to have a handicap ramp in a commercial building for access, and concrete is my preferred medium at this point. It'd be more durable, longer lasting. And of course, I would, just like the wood ramp, I would be responsible to maintain it. That's all I have.
Any questions?
You didn't ask questions.
All right, so, motion to close?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing for 230010 Main Street and SALU amendment. At 7:07.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The next item on the agenda is the SALU amendment for 23010 Main Street. So we need a motion.
Discussion.
Discussion.
The, I've been in contact with the attorney, and the attorney is pretty adamant that council needs to approve whatever material he uses, since it's going on village property. So, planning can amend the SALU wood requirement, but it has to be then said that it has to be material that is approved by the village council. Is the attorney's recommendation. It's village property, that's why council's the one that really needs to approve it.
And what about the practice that it needs to be removed? That's in contradiction to the other...
Is that in the SALU?
Yeah, I believe so.
Well, if... I didn't ask him that, because he was pretty adamant that council wanted it to be removable. So, I guess that would have to be council saying that if they allow a material that's not easily removable, that's going to be for them to decide.
Now, will you chime in at this point?
Sure.
What is the reason for the distinction between the two? Being permanent or...
It's village property, it's not his property.
True, but...
So what if they sell the building and the next person never opens the building? In theory, somebody else will use the building for the same kind of a use. So they too would also need a ramp, in theory. But nothing in life always goes as you would expect it to go.
Fair enough.
So, it's not our determination. Chair Delucky had discussed this with people, and it came up to the removable and made out of wood, so it was removable, so should they ever not keep the business open, not need the business, the next people don't need it? It wasn't taken up village property. So, that's why both those conditions were put in there. Bottom line is, it's going on village property, so council approved it based on those conditions. Not just, they didn't just give him permission to put it there, not taking into account the conditions that were set on them already.
Because the thing with that building is, there is really no other place to put a ramp.
Again, we're not telling him, or council, we didn't tell him he couldn't put a ramp. We told him it had to be wood, which he had a wood ramp. He'd like to change the material of the ramp now that he has to put the ramp back up. The other ramp got destroyed. Your job is not to say, well, if he's going to put up a ramp, let's let him put up what he wants. If he has options, and council is the one that's really going to tell him, we don't mind if you have a ramp, but we don't want you to put concrete, or hey, we don't care if you put concrete, it's village property. But his SALU, that was a condition of it, so we have to amend that SALU. But as soon as we amend that SALU, he does have to go back to council, because their agreement, even though it wasn't written in the agreement, was based on the conditions of the SALU.
Okay, because that, I was just going by the information that was included in the emails in my packet. I was also going back to...
Did you miss the last meeting for the rest of the...
The zoning ordinances, so...
We had to do the whole public hearing thing again, because we were amending an SALU, and an SALU requires a public hearing and notify everybody around.
So, just to be clear, my question is, if we have to go to coun, if the customer has to go to council to have the material approved, then the...
It would negate the removability if council agrees to concrete.
Would negate that, because this is in conflict with the other agreement they have.
Correct.
Okay.
So they would have to literally...
So council can do that both at the same time.
Right, council can amend their agreement, so put a new agreement, because the other agreement also says that you guys will remove it, doesn't it not?
When all three of those conditions are no longer in effect, then it terminates the agreement.
Correct.
But there's window wells there, which are never going, right?
Correct.
So in effect, it's never going to terminate.
So the ramp's got to block window wells?
No, no. They have window wells on the side, and the ramp, so the window wells stick out however far, and the ramp actually just took up the sidewalk up to where the window wells were.
I think they were...
About 18 to 20 inches.
As I say, I was at the cure today, and I was looking at it, and I was thinking about how nice the concrete would look compared to the wood.
So to their point, the ramp isn't going to stick out any farther than the window wells do.
Right, okay. And well, and it's not blocking anything that the wood ramp wasn't, it's probably even sleeker, and it's better, I would guess.
Well, there's, concrete in Michigan is very finicky.
It's not maintenance free either.
Depends who makes it. If it's old school, it'll last. If it's new school, it'll self-destruct in six months.
So, that's what you guys are tasked with. It's not that you're telling him he can't put up a ramp, or that you're not allowing him to change the material of the ramp. It's just previous planning commissions had approved a wood ramp that was removable.
We're just creating the space for...
So all you're saying is, yes, you agree that he could use a ramp.
Yeah.
But you're not going to stipulate the material, because it's village property, and he's asking for something, he's asking to not have anything put in the, just to have it deleted, and he can put it how he wants, but the attorney definitely said not to do that.
Okay.
I'm dribbling rolling it up to the council.
So to reiterate, ultimately, what we can do is just vote for the SALU amendment, but not the material.
Oh, what you're going to do is, you're going to vote to amend the SALU with regards to the ramp material needing approval by village council. If you so choose.
That's the recommendation from the attorney.
From the attorney.
We're free to make up our own line.
Correct.
I think we should go with the attorney's opinion, since it is village property. That's my two cents.
Okay.
The attorney's the one who recommended sending it up to village council.
Correct.
And I would agree, but we are making the space for them to approve it, but it's just one other layer of...
Correct.
That's correct.
It also mitigates responsibility among us and them.
I have nothing else to add.
The more heads on it, the better. I can't think of any reason why not, but there are six qualified people or more on that board who will see it again.
Bottom line is, it's village property, and that's really their decision what gets put on or happens to village property. We can recommend, but it's their responsibility.
Well, and our board won't be the ones dealing with any liabilities arising from it as well.
So, just to, if they decide, at this point, if the motion is that we decide we're going to go with the attorney's recommendation, then the store owner, property owner, could decide not to bring it to council and just keep things the way they were?
Correct.
Okay.
If he chooses to...
Just put back what was taken.
Put the wood there and leave it as is, then it would stay as it is.
Okay, so there's options.
Correct.
Still options, okay.
Correct. If he doesn't follow through on the next step, then it's like our stuff didn't happen.
Okay.
But we're making it possible for it to happen by sending it to council. Like we're amending the SALU so that it says, you could do this, and then council just has to approve it.
And that being said, though, he must act on that. Business owner must act within 365 days.
So he's got a year to bring it to council on.
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'm trying to remember where this is going.
I'll make a motion to amend the SALU at 23010 Main Street to remove specific verbiage about ramp materials and send it to village council for approval of specific materials.
Support.
That sounds close enough.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Okay. You know what to do.
Free to go.
Yes. You are dismissed.
Thanks, Ross. Sorry we couldn't give you more.
Nope, that's good.
Concrete. Answer, no pun intended.
That's all good. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Okay, on to number nine, zoning ordinance review. You start at four and go through?
Yep. This four is supposed to be print ready. Is supposed to be print ready.
I finished something strange with co-lation, so I read it backwards, I believe, but I was still just skipping. I gotta reorder it.
Well...
Well, it's there in the beginning.
We had a... It's confusing, I think it's a lot to, all the different versions of, and this one has been a long time since we've had it, so adult foster care facility is not otherwise listed in this table. We just pared it down to that one entry, correct?
No, she did. We did not.
She did, okay.
She deleted two of the other adult foster cares, because how can you refer to not listed in this table when there aren't any other listed in this table? But I just discovered, I found out today where to point her, to show her where she took them out, so that's on my list that she needs to...
Okay, so...
There's actually two more adult foster care things that should be there.
That she took out that we didn't want out?
Correct. But she took them out because we had questioned them, why some of them weren't together, and I think our question was more along the lines of couldn't they all be grouped together? And I think she just kind of took them out and didn't change the wording, or, but it used to read...
Family childcare game homes.
It read adult care facility, adult foster care family home, and adult foster care facility is not otherwise listed in this table, originally. That's how our ordinance currently reads.
That's what I hear here.
And right, and she took it down to just adult foster care facilities not otherwise listed in this table.
Okay.
So, she needs to, we need to decide, do we want them all in there? Do we want one heading that covers them all? But we don't, not otherwise listed in this table, there aren't any listed in the table.
Well, it's got to go, for sure. So it would be special permit in R1, and it would be permitted in RM, which is residential multiple.
Yes. And in the original, in our current ordinance, adult care facility is special in both R1 and RM, but adult foster care family home is permitted in R1 and RM.
So you can't really lump them all together?
Kind of, not really.
Okay.
So then she's going to get the way it is?
We should, my original notes don't have us doing anything to it, out of originally, so I think she should add it back in.
Okay.
Add those other two back in, because we didn't ask to have them taken out. We just questioned what the difference was between all the wording. What was the difference between adult care facility and adult foster care family home? We were asking what the difference was. Because down here on the bottom, on the next section, office and service uses, they also have nursing and convalescent home, foster care group homes, assisted living, so we questioned what the difference was.
Okay.
And she just took them out, misunderstood my notes to her, she took them out.
All right, anybody else have anything on this page?
Yes. Under office and service uses, remember last month I commented how all these special things, six point stuff on the site? Well, that one doesn't add up. That doesn't go to 6.5 or so.
I keep asking about that, and it's like, they're going to go through all this at the end, right?
And I went through section six that she gave us back and compared, so...
So she didn't do that yet?
She did, and most of them she missed.
Next page.
I'm good on that page.
I had a question on one of my previous additions, is nursing and convalescent homes, if it should be in residential? Did that get answered?
Well, it's permitted in RM, but it's special approval. Oh, should it be under that?
Yeah, instead of what categorizes where it is, office and service. I guess it's a service.
It's a service would be mine.
Okay. Anybody else on that page?
I have nothing.
How about the next page, 4.4?
There are a few more issues with things on the site, the six point numbers that I've made note of that I think were correct.
All right.
Recreation facilities, 6.404, it's not there, it's got to be deleted. Arcade's an indoor/outdoor amusement center, she's got 6.404, that's not even mentioned in 6.404. Auto parts store without repair services is incorrect, it should be 6.509.
I don't know what other stations the gas station is, what's that one? I was getting confused between automobile, truck, and motor vehicle repair stations for minor repair, not limited to body shops, da-da-da. On my previous edition, I have that as special and C2 and I, and here it's permitted, and I don't have any notes that we changed that. So maybe I'll dismiss that, or I'm confused for something.
I'm picking 4.4.
4.4, it's the last one on the recent, most recent edition.
We did change it.
We did, okay. All right. Anyone else? Didn't we probably change this one, too? Anything else in four?
Just, there was two more that the supplemental use standards were wrong that obviously fits.
Thank you.
You'll see, I mean, really, it's got to wait until six is completely done, and then we'll...
She can't confirm at all.
You just know, or are you going through each section and making sure it matches?
I went through each...
I was just saying.
Page by page. That was my afternoon while it rang.
Well, and I'm just reading this, I'm assuming, you know what I mean? Like I'm reading it...
Well, she changed several of them.
Got it.
Just a couple that didn't, she just messed us, yeah, but yeah, that's why we're reviewing it.
Okay, section five? Anybody?
I have no notes in that.
I do not have any notes in this one.
They did change the minimum area, lot area, for RM to 22.5, based on our, pointing out the map.
The map was wrong?
That's the map that worked the other way.
Yeah. Okay, I'm good with this. Anybody?
I have nothing.
Okay. How about six? See what we got? I don't see, I have a question.
This is the one that looks ready for print, right?
Well, this one I did specifically say that, but she didn't send me one, it's all cross talk, so...
Gotcha. I didn't say anything to her.
I didn't ask her to, so, because I asked her to send me four and five print ready, she sent me six, seven, and eight that way.
So our questions over here start on lot 6.206D.
Oh, no, 6.204, go to first. She didn't...
We asked her to remove that, huh?
Correct, but I made a note about it.
Okay. That was not... Question is 6.206D. Pedestrian circulation.
Under the sidewalk on the last side. I don't understand, or match existing adjacent sidewalk, whichever is greater, so our discussion was figuring out a way to gradually go from a five foot to a six foot. And this reads that they can do a minimum of six feet, or match existing sidewalk, whichever is greater. Well, whichever is greater is obviously going to be six foot.
Yeah.
So that's, we got to word that differently, I got to figure out how to phrase it to her that, you can't put in whichever is greater, I guess, it doesn't make sense.
Well, because she says over here that if sidewalks are less than 60 inches, passing spaces must be constructed every 200 feet.
Because I made a note about, my question to her said, is that ADA compliant? If we match a three foot wide sidewalk, is it ADA compliant? That was my question to her.
And no, if it's more than 200 feet.
Correct. So...
So...
We have to find a way to phrase that, so that it can be...
What we're looking for? Compliant?
Or...
Paper?
Tapered, tapered.
That's a nice word, very good.
Tapered to go to the six foot, but match the existing sidewalk.
So the ADA says they have to be three feet wide, but if sidewalks are less than 60 inches, five feet wide, you must have every 200 feet, you must have a passing zone.
Correct, which is why...
Which means you would have to widen to five feet every...
200, so you may as well just taper it and be wide enough to begin with.
Or you could say, or tapered to match existing...
Or tapered to match...
T A P.
And I would not put whichever is greater.
Yeah, and then cross that off. Or taper it to match existing adjacent sidewalk, period.
Right, something to that.
Something like that.
Whichever is greater.
Then at least get her to know what we mean.
Right.
Anybody else? Next page, or next? So, where do we have the next?
Six dash 11.
Oh.
Page six dash 11.
Oh, you have something. Six dash 11 page.
Under two family dwellings duplexes.
Uh-huh.
There's still nothing in there about them being allowed on major streets or corners.
Exterior entrances?
No. In your ordinance, it says that they're only allowed on, it's a special approval, and we wanted it to read that it was a permitted use on a major street or on a corner lot. It's only special approval if you're in the middle of a block or on a local street.
Okay, so she's just got to adjust that.
Correct. Was the intention of our amendment. There's no other place to put it, so there'd be no way to know, other than, you know, we would say, hey, we said you could do that, but if it's not in print, it doesn't matter.
Okay. 6501.
Uh-huh. I'll see the notes.
B, excess curb openings?
Yeah. Yep, no, I got to find the note.
Okay.
I lost all my paperwork when I was shuffling my crap around. In her email, she addresses that.
She says, can we allow, the question was, can we allow more than one access drive if the lot size is bigger? What would be good size to allow that?
Correct.
120 feet from center of driveway to center of driveway, that would provide four parking spaces and a drive aisle. So four parking spaces are where, on the road, on the driveways?
If, she's just giving you an idea of how wide that is.
Oh, that's just for driveways?
So, that, because right now we say no more than one access drive, curb opening, and some, it was mentioned to allow more than one. But I said, do you want two driveways on a 70-foot wide lot?
120-foot minimum.
Her recommendation is to make it that they have to have whatever, I don't have those notes in front of me.
120?
This one?
Yeah. From the center of driveway to center of driveway?
Correct.
Not very many people have a hundred and twenty foot of front, and those are made up.
Truly, you don't wanna have that many places having two driveways anyways.
Right.
So.
Okay, so do we wanna add that recommendation for her?
To, to go with her recommendation?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I think so too.
So we're not telling people if your, if your yard's big enough, you know, you're more than welcome to, but if it's not, we don't, we don't want your whole driveway, your whole front yard to be driveway.
Mm-hmm, right. Yeah, we do. I don't like that. That's almost not fair, it's an old community, one car wide driveways.
We're not telling you you can only have a one car wide driveway, we're telling you you can make your, your driveway two cars wide.
Millions can't make the driveways two car wide, because you're at the property line. Driveways went between your house and the next guy's property to get to a carriage barn.
I can picture a house on Main Street right now where it's gotta be grandfathered, she's got a driveway around the back.
Right.
And she likes to park on one side, and then she, I actually know her neighbor and she moves her car from when the sun comes big, like she literally moves it every day and parks on either side of the house, but she has a drive behind. I know what you mean, it's hard to say people can't do that, but.
Because I have one car driveway. I have two vehicles. If I wanna use the one that's up front, I have to back the first one out, park it in the street, put blinkers on, run back up, get the second one, back it up, park it in the street, put the blinkers on, run back over, get the first car, bring it back in for the driveway, run back down the driveway, and get in the car and go.
We had always wanted to widen when we lived, at Torrey, we always wanted.
They can't widen.
You can widen it to two cars.
I can't widen mine.
Yeah.
I go right between my house and the driveway.
You're, you're kinda just.
There's more than just.
Where do you, where would you put another one then? Do you have a spot for another driveway opening?
There's a bigger opening on the other side of the house.
That you could pull up and park in if you wanted to.
Exactly.
To change the driveway.
I think there's something that says they're supposed to be on the right-hand side.
There's nothing that says what side it is.
Well, then there you go. I have a, I have a big circle driveway, but I have, one part is shared and my house is very old.
Truly, the other one is more, uh, clips.
We have a third of it, yeah.
So.
Cause the other people that can't park are taking the village property and putting stone bed in it, and using a village property.
They shouldn't be doing that.
Yeah.
Well, they do.
Yeah, no, currently it's not allowed, period, period, not allowed to have two driveways.
I know, but there's a lot of them that do, and I'm sure they're.
Well, they shouldn't, no, there's no, actually, part of the ordinance says it doesn't matter, they should have been told to remove them.
Like that even less. She bought a house because it's got a nice big driveway, she drives around it, and someone says, oh, that's too bad, you have to get out now. Anybody, there's another note.
I don't know if they're getting fined daily or anything, but yeah.
Yes.
There's another note on, from the planner regarding section six point five oh one F, but it's really G, I believe. Yeah, probably. The last sentence, the question was, we'd like to allow more than just masonry construction, what would be some other suggestions? Privacy or screening walls? She did not address that.
It was in her email. Oh, she just said, question, she, no, 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 she just questioned, what are we looking for? So what are we looking for, when we said we don't, cause it says, building walls facing any residential districts or uses shall be of masonry construction. So, we had commented during one of our meetings that it would be nice if it could be something besides just a concrete wall.
Right.
But she's looking for us to say, what do we want? What would be our, what, what would we think would be, the, the whole purpose is to keep some of the noise and the smell contained in that thing, where, uh, chain link fences aren't gonna do it.
Well, it already says with soundproofing, so building, building walls facing any residential districts or uses shall be of.
Masonary construction.
Right. And we're fine with the masonry constructionals, leave it as it is.
I don't know what else we could do. Well, it says with soundproofing, so does that mean there's more to it than just masonry?
Not really, it's just a concrete wall that of and by itself would pretty much be, uh.
The soundproof.
Would help be a, a barrier for sound.
Well, just the way it was worded, it sounds like you're springing with something to dent the.
Or putting a bunch of trees or something.
Yeah, the way it's worded, that is kind of, uh, confusing.
I mean, I guess you gotta stop to think, you know, your house was against a, well, just in general, to make it a nice community, you know, how do you wanna keep the heavier industrial type things from?
Right, I'm okay with masonry.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Only because I can't think of a better word.
Whatever, well, and I can't.
What else would they be?
Constructed with.
Right.
Okay, well, that was her question. That was her question.
Okay, so we had, the next one is on five, six point five oh three, and we had, uh, put the question to the planner that we thought this was vague, and that we were looking for a little more content or direction, and, um, the response was that, uh, she'd like to know what we were thinking, we, she can address what we think, however, she's not clear, it's not vague to her.
Correct. So.
So what do we wanna do with it? Drive-in or drive-through lanes, facilities or establishments, that whole section, we said, you know, we don't really understand, it's too vague for us. Cause she put it back on us.
Well, I see the drive-through liquor store is prohibited.
You guys wanna review that in the next month and come up with.
Think about it.
Think about it, and then bring it back to what, what you'd like better explained or more clear?
Yes.
Instead of being put right on the spot.
Thank you, that's a good option.
Yeah. And what does she wanna know from us about?
We said it was kinda vague.
Okay.
It's not vague to her, so why are we saying it's vague?
Got it.
Explain yourself. She thinks it's fine.
So, if there's something that's not clear to you, make note of it and we'll address it.
Okay.
With her.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything on six? I do not. Why not do it here? Okay, so, let's see about seven. Seven? Section seven.
Uh huh.
Are you still on the Dr. fence?
No, that's wrong, that's section eight, in her notes.
Okay.
It was under.
I don't have anything on seven.
The only thing I have, um, back when Chair Deluckey was here, one of the things we commented on in, in seven point oh two B, part E, um, was the fourteen foot height. His suggestion was to raise it, but have the planner suggesting a height. I don't know his reasoning, so I can't, I can't argue for or against it. Obviously, they haven't thought that that's an odd height, but.
Equal to the height of the structure?
Well, that says, um, if it's higher than fourteen, then it has to be set at fourteen feet.
At least.
Set back at least that far. But, the, um, previous chair had mentioned that he thought that that should be raised. I don't, I don't know the logic, so I can't argue, I can't, I mean, if nobody here can think of a good reason, we'll just leave it at the fourteen feet.
It's the maximum height of more than fourteen feet, the structure.
They're making it so you can't put a really tall, it makes it so you can't put too tall of a building too close to your.
Correct.
You don't wanna put like your minimum of six feet from your property line and then put a thirty foot structure up.
Correct.
I think that it's a scene, I'd have to see examples of it, but I think that fourteen, I think a foot per setback, per foot of height sounds appropriate, but I, I would love to have heard why he wanted it higher, cause there was probably. Cause they have.
Unfortunately, if he said it, I wasn't listening.
Right, I'm just, I'm just wondering what specific scenario existed that we talked about.
So is fourteen feet one story, or is twenty feet one story, or?
Ten foot a story, I think?
I'm not sure. I thought it was ten foot.
I think, I think it's ten foot is the story.
So twenty feet would give it, put two stories. A possible two-story building, and fourteen feet is a one-story building. So you could.
Well, it says maximum building height is, in our one is thirty feet, and that's two and a half stories.
So. So ten, twenty?
From all property lines, like think about how many one-story garages are nor near fourteen feet away from the property line?
Well, this is for new structures.
Just for new ones that you're building?
Yeah.
Still, if you wanna build a garage in the back corner of your property.
Right there, all newest, accessory structures. How tall is one story?
Right, but, you know, you wanna build a garage in the back corner, how tall is one story? Plunk it in the back corner.
When you get that, a picture of the roof?
Well, they have a, they have a general height, right, your roof will be on top of that. But they have, um, I think they say a, a story is.
How tall is one story in building requirements?
So that's exactly a one for it, for a one-story building. I'm just thinking about where your garage would have been erected originally with a home, and it is, it's a, you know, six, eight feet from the property line in the back corner would have been acceptable.
But I don't think, I don't think that they go, well, I guess I don't know.
So if you wanna put up a new garage that's one story high, it's gotta be fourteen feet off the property line, even in like your back corners?
Um, I don't know.
I'm like the opposite of Chair Deluckey, I'm like, well, that should be smaller, you should be able to put up a one-story garage within, you know, eight feet of your property line in the back corner, like the people.
But see, that's if it's more than fourteen feet.
Got it, so if it's more than fourteen feet, you're allowed to use the six foot, that makes sense.
No, if it's more than fourteen feet, then it has to match the height of the structure.
Got it.
If it's less than fourteen feet.
You're allowed to use the six foot.
Correct.
So your average garages are fine, as if you wanna build.
It's a one-foot garage, a one-story garage, correct.
So no barns in the back corner. I can picture some, I can picture garages, out here specifically, we have barns with like halos in them.
So it's not saying that you can't put something higher, so I, I, I can only guess that his thing was raising the minimum before you had to do that ratio, but I don't know.
Right.
So.
And then what do you do on the house, like next to the shop? The first story is half a little up, because the basement is raised so high. Where do you start the measurement? Grade level, or?
Usually would be grade level.
Grade level, I'm sure is where they measure everything from.
Right.
Everything else is measured grade level.
Just discourages people from building too tall of garages, essentially. Cause you had, you would have to inset it, and, and village lots are not that big, if you had to inset something fourteen feet from both of your back properties, you would never wanna build a two-story.
Well, or it makes it, so it's not tall and skinny, because there isn't provision that it can't, you know, exceed the square footage of your home, first floor.
Right, yeah, fourteen foot per, over, that sounds reasonable to me.
Okay.
But I, yeah, I would be curious to know what instance brought it up, but.
Again, I can't tell you how some men think.
Who, Danny?
The one that's back there, I have to do.
Okay, so, was there any questions about eight? Um, yes. Chapter eight.
Yes, oh, definitely a fence question, yes.
Does anybody have anything to eat?
Well, we had questioned the, um, fence, so on eight dash two, we had questioned the chain link fence. Um, the maximum height of three feet.
I have a question about a fence that I can't believe it didn't come up before.
Was that section eight point two?
I have it on.
Section one?
What did I do?
Uh, it's section eight, it's eight point one oh one.
Six.
A six. Top of page eight dash two. Yeah, there you go, right there, in that table.
Okay, so this is really, that's what it is, which is correct.
Four side, four.
Sam can read the planner's recommendations, cause we had said, could it be taller than three foot as far as a chain link fence goes?
And her response was, um, no real problem with the higher height, but they may want to improve to fifty percent transparency requirement or similar, so that they don't end up with a tall wooden wall in someone's front yard. Is a five foot setback for the fence two, they could change that to one foot to ensure some separation from the sidewalk. We should just make sure that there's a small clear vision triangle for private driveways, five by five or smaller.
So we had questioned the chain link fence, but then the subject also came up about people that put those vinyl things through, those leaves, slats through there, cause then essentially, it makes it a solid fence, so. I like all of her suggestions, from the person that sits in this office and he has to deal with people calling all the time about fences, I'd like you to raise it to four feet with some of those other provisions. I, the five foot setback to me is still ideal.
Yeah.
Um, I get the one foot, but you don't really want it set right up on a sidewalk, and then they plant stuff on the other side of the fence, and then it all runs over the sidewalk.
And they don't play touch and tap.
What would you consider a wrought iron fence? You know, the kind that's got the little, you know, little.
Ornamental fence?
Are they ornamental?
Yep.
Do those have to have a top rail if they're gonna be in the front yard?
Have to have a top rail.
Seems to be an impalement hazard, if you're asking me.
Martha Griffiths, take their spades off the top.
There's that, speaking of adult care facilities, there's one on, right, you know the one, there's only one on the church, I think it is. Um, but I always, when we lived in the village, I made my kids ride their bike in the street, because it's a, it's about three foot high fence, that has just those wrought iron spades all the way across the top. Now, if you look at the neighbor's fence on the corner, they have the exact same design with the wrought iron fence, but there's a top rail, which keeps it from being an impalement hazard, just from a liability standpoint, I always said, if, if somebody fell over on a bike there, you've got, and they're not four feet high, like, they're kid height, like, three feet high, and I always thought about it. It just occurred to me, cause we were talking about adult care facilities and front yard fences, that I've been meaning to bring it up for years, that is so hazardous. You watch kids ride by, if somebody tipped over on that, that, those wrought iron little spades, it's, like I said, the fence is about that high, it's about kid height.
Three foot high.
I always used to make them go and ride, ride in the street around it, cause, you know, they're learning to ride their bikes, and they're on the sidewalk, and I was like, good god, get away from that fence, there's nothing stopping you from, I don't know why, it always just occurred to me that that looked really dangerous, and it is managed by a company out of mansion, so they like, I, I always thought about it. Cause that fence would seem like one that I would bring up as not a good idea.
That's why I was like, what they were told to have kid's rights off.
They did not. Maybe, maybe they're filed down or something that I don't know of, but I remember telling my kids, get out and go around, on the road, on, around that one, I'd rather you risk a car coming and seeing at you than going by and tipping over on us.
Okay, so do we, are we going to make a suggestion that she changed this to four feet with fifty percent transparency requirement or similar?
I would, I would absolutely say that they can't put any slats in there.
Oh, I, I agree.
And it has to, no, no.
Absolute one hundred percent transparency.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
And it can weave down so they don't weave through it and make a full.
Yeah, I would, I, because until, even the fifty percent, you're still creating to me a, 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 a sight issue.
I think that would look challenging.
How do you measure fifty percent transparency too? Like, to me, a fence is fifty percent transparency.
Why did we want this to be four feet?
A fence is fifty percent transparency, anything additional, you're seventy-five, eighty percent.
Chain link does not come standard three feet, so it's a special order. And the real issue is in a corner lot. Corner lots have two front yards. So, most people have a problem with the four foot in the backyard, it's the front yard, and it's the people on the corner lots that it's proven problematic for.
I got it.
And I have a hard time explaining to them how a four-foot chain link fence is any more sight obstructing than a three-foot chain link fence.
That is hard to.
So, that's, you know, I was suggesting the four foot based on calls that I get in the office.
Is that standard height, four foot?
Four foot, for a chain link. For a chain link.
We had that transparency issue just come up with the parks, cause a guy wanted to put the transparency in his fence, and we basically told him, no, it's our fence.
I, I would.
I think it's a good idea not to put it, put it on there, cause you're gonna.
Keep one hundred percent, one hundred percent transparency, so.
So if we could change this to four feet and somehow make a note that there can be no.
I'll ask her where we could add a note about, um, a hundred percent transparency.
I was like, is there, do, this is for the situation where the people who technically have two front yards, right, or they wanna run the four foot?
Well, it's for anybody, but that's the issue where it comes up, is, is people that have a side yard.
Yeah.
That, uh, have the two front yards, yes.
And that will alleviate problems.
You should almost be always able to run four foot behind your, the face of your house's threshold, or what, you know what I mean? Like, if it's behind your house, side yard.
But it's not, but it's not, see, that's the problem. And I, and outside, we're not the only ones that do that, I mean, like I told you, a common township does that.
That's tough, cause you have to set back your fence so hard from what would normally be extra backyard.
Anything else in that page? The next question from the planner, in response from the planner is page eight four.
Well, I just wanna point out that they did make the changes on, the repairs have to be less than fifty percent with no structural or material changes, otherwise it requires a permit, you have to buy by the new ordinances, so, I do like that.
Less than fifty percent?
I'm sorry.
That's okay, sorry, uh, eight point, eight dash three, eight point one oh one C, one A repairs. We had asked, because we questioned, how much of a fence has to fall down before you
Yes.
are considered a new fence or repairing an old fence, so it's specifically stated in there, it has to be less than fifty percent, and you can't change the material or it's a new fence.
Okay, so the next response from the planner is eight point two oh two, which is on page eight dash five, and we had asked about.
Topography.
Topography for wetlands, the.
The way it was stated, we didn't understand that what they were saying didn't mean topography, so he rephrased it.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I read it, I like what you wrote.
Yeah, I did too, it, it was like, oh, I get it now.
Right, exactly, it explained it.
Yep. Okay, and then the next one, we'd asked about eight point five, eight point three or one.
This is part of that email.
Yes, I have that right here.
This is the decibels discussion.
Right, this isn't gonna go in there, but we had asked just for our purposes to know how much, how loud that noise was, to know if those are acceptable limits to have.
We had no frame of reference.
This is a good visual for what you're looking at, sound wise.
Right, so, yeah, so then when I look at it, I see, like, residential, we have that fifty-five decibels, and on the chart, you know, your average home noise is forty, your, your normal background noise is sixty. So, that seems a little low, doesn't it?
I thought the same thing, but.
They seemed, they all seemed a little low to me, but I didn't see anything that directly corresponded to animal and agriculture, so I just kinda put it outside car noise. Little pets barking and neighbor's dog barking, what would that fall in?
Well, I'm sure that that's, but it's, it limits it to fifty-five decibels, again, that's the same thing as nor, as residential sound, and that seems kinda, kinda low. Background.
Sixty is normal, like, there's literally a dot under sixty, it says normal, so fifty-five is essentially low.
I mean, seven, it says a vacuum cleaner, seventy-five or the average radio.
So, it's when we go to the vacuum house now?
Well, for animal agriculture, I think it's unreasonable to expect them to be quieter than normal conversation.
Right.
Right, so it should be more like a vacuum cleaner or an average radio.
I would think seventy-five, yeah, seventy, yeah, once you get into eighty, you're talking like heavier, louder noises, yeah.
Yeah, we don't wanna get to the danger zone, but, and then, there, there's also no real way to enforce it either, residential, fifty-five decibels, so.
We've got their decibel measure.
Exactly.
How do you, how do you measure how lots and.
I'm sure they have a tool for that.
I'm sure, cause it's all subjective.
But I don't think that the village does, well, you're right, use an app on your phone, you could do that.
Nice, there you go, it's gotta be subjective to, is it bothering, I tend to be bothered by noise, I'm sensitive, so I get the low decibels.
Yeah, but how does this relate to the noise that's that we're on a street?
You wanna be able to say that it needs to be lower.
About lucky fence? Now, we used to have the, the time limit, but after such and such a time.
Seven AM to seven PM, we're not allowed.
One about the fear during, you can hear the fear from my house, and I'm, what?
All the.
Red flag, red flag, red flag, red flag.
I missed that, that's my fear, I think about living in the village, you can hear it, you can hear when there's something good going on in the grass.
Look, I see fire.
So, do we wanna change any of these levels?
I'd say we should up them all. Animal agriculture to seventy-five. Residential to, I don't know, sixty?
Normal conversation?
Yeah.
What if they have an argument?
It's not allowed.
Whisper.
Office and service, like, office noise.
You get a one hour limit, solve in an hour or you're done.
It says right on here, office noise is seventy, but it says office and service is limited to fifty-five, so that's kinda contradictory.
I would say seventy for that, community, I would say seventy for community. Commercial, maybe a little bit more, like, vacuum cleaner, average radio.
What is that?
Seventy-five. Industrial, seventy-five.
Yeah, I would stop at seventy-five.
Yeah.
I wouldn't allow anything higher than seventy-five.
Any comments?
These are within the, how does that apply to the time of day, like, quiet hours between nine PM and seven AM, are they still permitted to make that loud of a noise, seventy decibels?
Um, in such a manner, it should be prohibited between the hours.
Seven, so.
Where does it say that?
Uh, eight dot three zero one subsection A one.
It says that you can't.
Right there, right below that.
Okay.
Seven PM and then, okay.
What do you analyze in that?
A, uh, A one, A two.
The village has a noise ordinance, but, again, available point is, normal conversation is a sixty, so you, right now, our, our ordinance says fifty-five, you couldn't have a normal conversation?
In, yeah, in your yard, it'd be too loud.
You know, so that doesn't, that, that, that has to
Has to be larger than fifty-five, yeah.
correspond a little bit better, yeah, it just.
Yeah, I think adjusting to, to this, um.
Sixty being normal is, yeah, fifty-five is way too low.
It makes a lot more sense.
Although I don't wanna listen to animal noises at the rate of a vacuum cleaner. That's me personally, I tend to be very noisy when my neighbors are noisy, and I live, I've successfully lived in a lot of neighborhoods, I do not wanna listen to your dog bark for extended period of time, I don't care.
Well, there's an ordinance against that.
Good luck getting anybody to move about a dog bark, it's a very slippery habit, six AM to seven AM, then eight PM to nine PM, like, you know, the dog barking thing.
We have police twenty-four seven.
I never had a problem out here, but I'm saying, like, in other areas, there's places, places where a dog barking can really, really bother you.
I don't disagree, but there are other, other ordinances in that same place, so.
So it's, it wouldn't allow for somebody to let their dog yip and yap, because it's protected by seventy de, I don't think it's seventy decibels over there. You know what I mean, people would say, oh, it says it's not seventy decibels, so if it's not seventy decibels, I can let my dog bark from nine AM to nine PM if I want, or whatever it is.
Well, just, okay, seventy?
I don't, it really, this affects me none, where I live, you can't tell an animal to shush up ever, Riley Township, so if you're farming it, roosters, everybody's law, animals are allowed, so I, you know, there's much less control where I live, personally, you have a little more space, but, um, yeah, I just wouldn't wanna create anyone's space for their animals to be noisy and disturbing anybody else.
Animal and agricultural, what do we wanna say, seventy, seventy-five, sixty, what, what do we, what do we agree on?
Office noise inside a car at sixty miles an hour, I think, yeah, seventy sounds like a reasonable number for animals.
Agreed with that?
Yeah.
For residential, I think sixty, because that's what normal conversation is?
Yeah.
Office and service, I'd say seventy, because that, um, conforms with office noise. And same thing for community, seventy decibels for office noise. Commercial, I was equating with vacuum cleaner, average radio at seventy-five decibels, somewhere. And industrial, the same thing, so that, according to the chart, the sounds above eighty-five are considered to be harmful, so we're, we're well inside the the no harm zone.
Harmful like to your hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's still a, that's a careful consideration, even though it's more than it was.
Do you wanna maybe reference like another township or see what, see what, if they, anybody else has selected specific decibels? Cause why did we pick fifty-five to begin with, that seems like an interesting number, is that based on what an average community uses?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know if there would.
Just before we randomly stamp decibels out of the air and choose, oh, I would wonder, like, what is there like a reasonable scale that communities?
I'll see what else I can find.
Yeah.
As far as I know, that is the last of what came from the planner's comments.
Correct.
So if there's anything else that anybody has in the rest of the eight?
Did McKenna say anything about the decibels being low or just provide the scale?
Provided the scale. She said these are standard.
She said the fifty-five decibels are standard?
No, these are, these are standard.
The chart is standard.
Her chart is standard.
The one from WebMD?
These are standard, like, this is a good reference, but what's like standard, like, what does the city of Mont Clemens have for their decibels?
I'll look.
You know, just curious, before we actually pick.
I'll look.
Say, I could look now, if we want, just to save time, or I can leave it for you back, it's up to you.
Well, I think you have to look at more than one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, do you wanna split that up? Do you wanna do it?
I'll do it, that's fine.
Okay. Alright, so, um, next thing is reports, anybody have anything?
I have another.
Um, I would just suggest, um, since the chair's not here to assign it, that, that we go through.
Yeah, we're all caught up now.
Yeah, pretty much. Nine and ten.
Okay. That's your homework.
How many are there altogether?
Forty-seven. Twenty?
Twenty-five, those are very different answers.
Twenty-five is the definition.
Forty-five, yeah.
Yeah, I thought you said forty-seven, I was like, wow, we already had this a while.
Thanks, Beth.
We're gonna have to hurry to get it done out here. In a year, okay, um, if there's nothing else, we're free to adjourn the meeting, do we have a motion?
I'll, uh, make a motion to that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll sign.
Eight oh three.
Eight oh three.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye.